Good evening and welcome to the September 23 Board of Education meeting. If you could all rise for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. James, could you take attendance?
Yep, President McDonough?
Here.
Vice President Aldrich is absent. Secretary Summers is here. Treasurer Whitney?
Here.
Trustee Gibson?
Here.
Trustee Atchison?
Here.
Trustee Cappuccini?
Here.
Thank you. Changes to the board agenda?
Yep, I do have one. I'd like to make a motion to, I just want to make sure I get the right section here, under Board of Education matters that we add in there, updates from the Governance Committee.
Support. Shane, thank you. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Wonderful. We'll put that between A and B if that works for you.
Yep.
Thank you. Alright, scheduled public comment. Do not have any this evening. And we have our consent agenda. Would anybody like to make that motion? James, thank you.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Support. Ann, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Alright, item number five, our superintendent highlights with Dr. Milligan.
Alright, good evening, everyone. I want to begin, as usual, by emphasizing our strategic vision, empowering learners, building community, and inspiring futures. I also want to acknowledge the amazing work happening across the district that is bringing our vision to life. From learners in our classrooms who are empowered to take ownership of their academic choices, to new students who are being warmly welcomed into their school communities, to students exploring exciting learning pathways that open doors to future possibilities. Our Oxford team continues to deliver on our vision every day. And as a reminder, our mission is the path we walk daily to achieve this vision. And this is guided by our core values, where we ensure that the way we work together truly reflects the qualities needed to make our vision a reality. And with that, we begin some highlights. So tonight's highlights include a strategic plan activity we did with our ad team, and they took back to their individual teams. We'll talk a little bit about that. Staff appreciation night at the football game. And the presentation to Oxford Lakes HOA. Want to shout out to them and say thank you. And some additional school highlights. So, we see Officer Barnes here with his core values commitment. This activity, our ad team leaned into our core values, empowerment, belonging, innovation, and integrity, and selected one that they were going to lean most heavily into this year. And on their card, they talked about which one it was, and how they were going to demonstrate that value every single day. Officer Barnes here is looking at interacting with students each and every day to increase the sense of belonging. So it was really fun to see. And thank you, Kristi, for sending that. I appreciate that. So you'll see these posted throughout the district. I have mine in my office. And it is also, it's about empowerment and empowering our adults to be strong leaders. So that was a fun activity. I also want to say thank you to our OHS Athletic Boosters, who supported a fantastic staff appreciation night, which is aligned with Goal Three, Empowering Staff. They provided dinner for staff who came to the game. Tony DeMar and his team set up where the staff was going to gather. We went through the Wildcat Tunnel, which was on my bucket list, so I feel really good about that. Now, I wanted to run out like Rocky, but people said no, so I didn't get to do that, but that's okay. I also want to thank Ryan and our HR team, as well as our wellness team, for helping put this together. We are leaning heavily into Goal Three and really focusing on staff development, staff support, staff empowerment. And this was a great way to really kick it off. And of course, I appreciate the staff who attended. We had about 150 staff attend. And with their families, it totaled almost 400 people who attended. So it was really fun to celebrate them and have their families celebrate them. The Oxford Lakes HOA, that was an incredible opportunity for us to kind of share the sinking fund and the operating millage with the homeowners association. So I appreciate them allowing us to speak during the Q and A session. So we were, John and I were able to talk about the two millages, what they meant, what they meant for property values, and everybody was very gracious and attentive. We handed out our flyer and talked about information that's on our website. So I really appreciate Oxford Lakes allowing us to present. Some school highlights. We have, these are pictures of the Clear Lake playground. So this is pretty exciting. So Clear Lake had their September PBIS celebration. And during the celebration, there was a ribbon cutting to officially open the new recess area on the playground. It has a colorful sensory path, four square courts, and lines on the basketball court, which were painted by Clear Lake's parent and artist, Mr. Pascal, and funded by the Clear Lake PTO. A new volleyball net was also put up to give students another play area. And after the ribbon cutting, the whole school enjoyed an extra recess. You know, elementary kids are all about that. And it had music, bubble wands, and had fun using the new playground area. And I just love how colorful that is. It's so beautiful just to even look at. It's a work of art. So thank you to Mr. Pascal, and thank you to the Clear Lake PTO. We also had our Clear Lake 5th grade camp. Looks like they had beautiful weather. They did an overnight camp at Echo Grove. This camp provides students the opportunity to participate in different activities, such as archery, climbing towers, zip line, team building, paddle boats, and more. And they typically like to go in the fall because it provides a unique experience for students to engage with each other and build connections that they can carry throughout the rest of the school year. And here are some additional pictures of the archery and climbing wall. And I especially appreciate Ms. Neamy, who clearly joined in the fun and enjoyed herself. So I always appreciate when our leaders do that. This is from Crossroads. They had two really great experiences. The first one has to do with the exotic zoo, which made its first trip to Crossroads. Students and staff enjoyed an incredible educational wildlife program with a variety of animals, including groundhog, skunk, reptiles, spider, baboon, sloth, and Siberian lynx, to name a few. Students participated in guided horse rides, and several received lessons that were able to demonstrate their new skills with a short ride independently on our campus. They also received their first PBIS donation from their new partner with Oxford Orion Fish. Kathy and Rich from Fish purchased healthy snacks from Costco and delivered them to Crossroads Campus for the PBIS store. Students were able to purchase and receive items from the PBIS store every Monday and Wednesday. And finally, to highlight, this is an OVA shout out and highlight. We've partnered with Michigan Elite. This is a program tailored for college-bound student athletes. And it's launched its onsite classes partnering with Oxford Virtual Academy. Students follow a dynamic daily routine that includes weight training, ice time, Pilates, cardio, film review, and academics delivered through Oxford's curriculum. So those are my school highlights. We have a couple of additional updates. We'll start with Dr. Williman with a safety update. And then we'll have Dr. Gary Van Staveren come up and talk about the millage update and our digital dashboard.
Real quick, Tanya, if I can, just a quick question.
Oh, sure.
I believe this marks now the second time that there's been a sloth in this district, and you've not made me aware?
I thought you were going to say the skunk.
Three strikes. That's all you get.
Man, that's harsh. That's harsh. Yeah, when is your birthday?
I did get lucky last year and get to go to Science Alive with Leonard, so I have a really great selfie with a sloth.
Oh, yeah, rub it in. Rub it in. That's hardcore.
Every once in a while, there's little perks to my job. So, welcome to the safety update for this meeting. As a reminder, you are able to access this one pager that we have by going to the School Safety and Security website, a section of our website, and then scrolling to where our Community Conversation video is. And then this document is hyperlinked within that box. So as we continue to go down the list, we have 3M protective film. This is film that is put in across our district, and it really is focusing on being shatter resistant and being glass fragment retention for anyone trying to enter our building, not through the front door, whether it be through using different devices. It's not going to stop everything. It's just going to create a resistant film. And so that is things that we have across our district and different buildings. The next item on there is building alarms. So those are our burglar alarms. Should we have any sort of person try and get into our building outside of school hours, even if it's staff and they forget to use their badge, we get an alert for it. That's set up to be the principal, myself, the sheriff's department, so that we can partner with them. The village, as appropriate, such as this building, would be alerted so that we're able to look at that. And then with that, should any sort of burglar alarm go off for any reason, whether it's someone trying to get into our buildings or just a staff member who didn't swipe as they walked by to deactivate the alarm, there are some of us throughout the district as well that can check cameras off property to be able to both look and make sure that it's secure, and that will be able to help in case someone was trying to get into our buildings. And then on this sheet, the last thing would be go kits for emergency situations. These are buckets. They're five-gallon buckets that are in areas where children are. So we do have some that are in different offices, but for the most part, they're predominantly in classrooms and inside our supplies in the event that they had to, if there was a chemical spill. They could seal off their door. If there was a situation that required them to have to evacuate, they would be able to take that bucket with them. There's first aid supplies within there. There's a whole list of items. So if you see their Ace Hardware white buckets in classrooms, that's what that's for, to be able to use things like tarps and gloves. And if there was any situation where we needed masks, those are all in there as well. And then, not on here, because it's in the piloting stage, but wanted to touch on things like vape detectors, because that has come up. We are currently piloting a vape detector at OEIC. We had it installed late spring last year. And Bridges and OVA and Loft has very graciously agreed to be able to pilot this with us. And we picked that area because there's two bathrooms right next to each other. And the people who receive the notification are within a couple of feet from that. And so we're looking at piloting that in the fall, and then looking to see what other options are out there. Because we've been researching this for a while, and companies that will give us, oh, here's this school district, this school district, will call them, and they'll say, there's so many false positives, it's not worth the time. This company, when we called school districts, they said, they're alright. So I said, alright, that's better than absolutely not. So that's why we're piloting on a small scale. We are researching, Dr. Milligan and I, and we've started to approach this topic with other secondary principals, of what does that look like in a large-scale building? Right now at OEIC, I can take a couple of steps, and I'm there. So it's a lot easier to figure out if the person's in the bathroom still, and what they're doing. And when you look at a footprint like the high school and the middle school, we need to research what's going to be most effective, what's also going to be fiscally responsible, and how the monitoring is going to look. So this is an ongoing conversation and something I know that we've had with Mr. Bigelow and Ms. Satterstad over the last couple of years. But now that we have a product to try, we will then bring that forward to them, but also look at what else is out there. Because Dr. Milligan and I both have experience in secondary. It brings us a whole other world when you're looking at all of the things that come from high school. And so we just want to make sure whatever we do is going to be effective and supportive for our campuses, and not just be a thing that is there. So that's our safety update today. Any questions?
Yeah, regarding the building alarms, other than the main entrances at the schools or the entrances that lead to the office, if those other doors are opened, even during school hours, is anyone alerted to them?
There are doors that do have contact alarms throughout the day, but the burglar alarm would focus on after hours when people are out of the building.
Sure. I guess I'm, I was more concerned with when students are in the school versus in the middle of the night. I just mean, are doors activated and somebody is notified if a door that shouldn't be opened is open during school hours?
We do have some doors with contact alarms on them, not all of them, but that's part of the culture of safety that we have here, and part of Fortis's responsibility and our custodian's responsibility is to go around and check doors.
Okay.
For the 3M on the glass, that's not ballistic resistant, correct?
Correct.
And so, is that also on every window or just more main points of entry classrooms? What, I mean, I guess if you could give me an estimate of the percentage of windows within our district, could you guesstimate?
It is in a lot of windows throughout this district. If I give you percentages or estimates, then I would be sharing where it's not, and I'm not comfortable doing that.
Okay, understood. And then for the vape detectors, if I understand this correctly, you are piloting this year OEIC?
Yes.
And I'm sure you've done research and seen plenty of the studies that show that just the pilot itself, you know, it can reduce by up to 80% the alarms that go off. Do you think that that is something that you would see correlate into the high school? Or do you think OEIC is a better pilot area?
If we were to pilot it at the high school or middle school, it'd be very easy to figure out what bathroom we were piloted in. So then kids would avoid that bathroom.
Okay.
Which was why we picked the spot that we did, because all of the kids have to go to that bathroom. You don't really have that much of a choice if you're on the first floor.
Gotcha. Thank you. Any additional questions, comments? Appreciate it. Alright, next up, we have Dr. Van Staveren.
Alright, good evening. It's good to see you all again. And today, we're going to be talking about the millage update, kind of give you some more information, actually getting into the website so that you can also see what we've been doing as far as educating the community, also from our website. And then, we're going to go into the dashboard a little bit more. And then I think after that presentation, we're going to have a little discussion about the dashboard as well. So revisiting the proposals, getting into our website, more steps, how we've, what we've done to inform the community, and then getting into our dashboard. And so you've seen a lot of this already, but I do think it's important to continue to educate and learn more about an operating millage versus a sinking fund millage. And so on the left side, you're going to see here, operating millage. What is it? It is a non-homestead property, so commercial, industrial, second homes. This is not going to increase taxes on primary residences. And then on the right side here, we have sinking fund millage. And so you see that that is a local property tax. And thank you, you've authorized us to propose a one-mill levy. And so what can we use sinking fund for? That's going to be for building repairs, technology, roof, boilers, HVAC, et cetera. On the left side here, operating millage, key facts. The state expects us to leverage this 18 mills. We're not doing that. We're at 17.3. And so we're not fully funded, okay? We're required by the state to receive full funding, and that would be the 18 mills. And so that's why we have this operating millage replacement, so we can get to that 18 mills instead of the 17.3. And again, the impact is no tax increase. And that's going to bring in about $250,000 a year back into our general fund. And on the right side, again, sinking fund, this would result in a tax increase. And we're going to actually go into that a little bit more, about what that means, what does that really look like for the homeowners? And then that's going to be about 1.6 million, and that is going to help our general fund, alright? So instead of purchasing a boiler or technology out of the general fund, it would come out of sinking fund. So again, we can keep that 1.6 million. We can keep that in the classroom. So what are some things that we're going to be doing in the first year? So if the sinking fund passes, on the right side, you're going to see some very specific things and specific buildings that will be impacted. So for example, emergency roofing repairs, district-wide. We've got a lot of roofing needs. Sinking fund is going to help pay for that. Entryways and doors at the middle school and the high school. Replacing broken flooring, outdated air handlers at OES and the high school and Leonard, et cetera, et cetera. So those are some very specific things we'll be doing in the first year. And there's also, we're going to be working on a 10-year plan, and that should be on the website in the next couple days. Again, looking at 10 years, what are we going to be doing over the next 10 years with the sinking fund money? Any questions on this so far?
Gary, can you speak to why it says preliminary?
Preliminary because costs may change. You were, you know, most of us are homeowners, and so you've probably had an estimate for something. For example, you might have an estimate for your driveway, and that estimate might only be good for 30 days because costs change. And so that's why this is preliminary. This is what we'd like to do, but we don't want to really commit to it because, again, costs change and so on. So hopefully that helps.
In addition to, they're just like a house, right? You might set aside money to do the patio, but then your air conditioning breaks. So you have to shift the money.
Right.
So it's similar to that, yes. Thanks.
Mike?
Under operating millage replacement, key facts. I see the fourth bullet point, required by the state to receive full foundational allowance funding. I don't know if it's just word kind of funny, so, I mean, I understand that the state expects us, in order to get our full funding, the state expects us to have full 18 mills.
Yes.
But the state doesn't require us, obviously, because we're right now pulling only 17.3.
Right.
And so, is that just word kind of funny, or maybe I'm reading it wrong? But it says required by the state to receive full foundational allowance, so it's not required by the state?
This is the mechanism that the state requires us to use to get the funding. Does that explain it better?
Correct. So, okay, yes, this is, yes, I understand that. This is the mechanism to, that we are required to use to get the full funding.
And so I think, I think it's like 96.08, and I'm going to show a slide in a moment, but, and I think we're around 95.73 or something. So we are just a little bit below what that full foundation allowance is, per pupil.
Okay.
Okay.
Not to be a Debbie Downer, but what happens if they don't pass?
Well, for example, some of these, these are, these are high needs that have to be done, you know, roofs, et cetera. That would come out of the general fund. And so by coming out of the general fund, then that's going to impact the classroom, et cetera. So obviously, we, you know, we want to use this 1.6 million, okay, and to help pay for those items, so.
For the transformer at the transportation facility, is that similar to the OMS situation where there was, you know, why we were on a generator for a couple of months? Or is that a separate issue?
Separate issue.
Separate?
Yeah. That one I'm not sure about. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
When looking at, maybe we can talk later then, John, about the other buildings, has there been an assessment of where we're at with those?
Well, all the equipment.
Yeah, the potential for that to happen again. Have we looked at that fully or not yet?
Yeah, in terms of assessing all the equipment. It says the last piece has been wound down. Now we're actually waiting for a report to come along. The organization was Incinity Company, and we're in real points, and we're issuing a summary of what they did, about what we looked at. So we have a good idea, just from our term reviews, equipment, and this kind of cross reference. So yeah, we've got that. That's kind of one of the leading things in terms of building, the 10-year plan.
Got it. Thank you. So important to remember that there could be additional items, right? Thank you.
Yes, and thank you, John. And again, that 10-year plan, we're hoping will be on the website in the next couple days. Okay? So what else are we educating the community on in regards to the millages? One example is, on our webpage, we have a sinking fund calculator. So, you know, I live in Oxford. I want to know, how is this going to impact my taxes? And so we put a calculator on the website. And so for example, you're going to be able to type in your market value, okay? Market value, not taxable value. Market value, what you think your home is worth. And then push the button, calculate, and you're going to get right there in green what your estimated cost is going to be annually. So if you have a $400,000 home, that's your estimated market value. It would be an increase of $200 annually in taxes, okay? And that's going to be, again, I'll show you that in a moment, on our website. We also have a ask questions here as well. And we also have frequently asked questions. And so when you click on that button to ask questions, we do answer those, and then we put those questions and responses on the website, and that's this frequently asked questions. So, when you go to our website, first thing you're going to see is a pop-up. That's just this right here, your schools, your community, your vote. It pops right up as soon as you go to the site. And we're actually going to go in and take a look at it. Okay, so now we're actually on the website, and let's go ahead and scroll down. Over here on the right side is the have questions, ask here. We do answer those in a timely manner. Again, what's on the ballot? On the left side, you see that operating millage. On the right side, you see sinking fund millage. What it is used for, what's the impact? Here is the calculator that I just gave the example of. Let's go ahead and type in 400... Nope, never mind. We won't do that. And then we have more resources. So we're going to continue to grow these resources, continue to add more videos, some nano-learning, in terms of helping our community. Underneath that, you're going to see a millage flyer on the left. Non-homestead operating millage flyer in the middle, sinking fund flyer on the right side. Then underneath, you will see those frequently asked questions. Those are broken into general information. What is a mill? We might not know what that actually is. So you can go ahead and hover your cursor over that, click on it, and there's your explanation of what a mill is. Can you vote absentee ballot? A lot of people want to know about what absentee ballot is, especially post-COVID. And so you can click on that. It gives you all the dates for absentee ballots, and there's also a live link to go ahead and register for an absentee ballot as well. And as we continue to go down, you're going to see more information about those November 4 ballots. What do the proposals look like on the ballot, the exact verbiage? What is an operating millage? What is a sinking fund millage, et cetera? Now, one thing I did want to show is, some questions that we've heard are, how many districts in Michigan have a sinking fund? And it's roughly about half. So about half of the districts in Michigan have a sinking fund. But you can see other questions there. What's the difference between a sinking fund and a bond? Sinking fund millage, how is it different from operating millage? And then at the bottom, you can see all submitted questions, and that relates back to that top, up at the very top. Okay? Any questions so far?
For the all-submitted questions, when do you anticipate the answers to be on the website?
They're pretty, we're pretty quick turnaround. I would say within a week.
And does that go directly to the person that submitted, or does it... Or does it, is it public facing?
Um.
They have the option to put in their contact information.
Yes.
And if they can respond directly, but no.
Yeah, they can put in their name or their email. And so they could get a direct response, but it'll also be on the website. Okay. So what about research? What does research say about investment in schools? We've got two millages coming up on November 4th. And it is really important to learn more about the impact that investment in schools has on students, on student learning, on our staff, on real estate value, your home value. So as school goes, your real estate goes as well. And so there's a lot of research out there. And I'm just kind of touched on a few things here. But capital investments significantly improve test scores. So heating, ventilation, air conditioning, you know, having non-leaky roofs, et cetera, has a direct impact on student learning. Improve facilities, improve student attendance. So again, that HVAC, if students have allergies, et cetera. And our air handlers are, as expected, that's going to improve student attendance. A dollar 62 return for every dollar invested increase, okay, in our facilities. School quality affects resale value regardless of having children. That's going to increase all of our property values. A 5% improvement in test scores correlates with a 2.5% increase in home values. So a lot of research out there about investing in our schools and the positive nature of that. So any questions on the millage update? Okay. Onto the dashboard. We've talked about this a little bit. And we're still uploading data. But want to give you just a quick update on the dashboard. And then I think we'll have a little discussion after that. So when you are actually in the dashboard, you'll see some photos here. But you can hover your cursor over it. You're going to have data that's going to pop out. You're going to be able to click and drill down deeper. There's also a button called key resources. And so on our website, you can find the strategic plan. You can find the TRSIA document. You can find other things. But you can also now find it on the dashboard, the data dashboard. So instead of having to go somewhere else to go find it, it's also going to be in key resources over on the right side. So we are going to go ahead and look at this as well. And I apologize for these delays. So again, just helping with navigating the dashboard. That's what we're doing tonight. Here's our main dashboard. And again, our four goals. And on the right side, you're going to see metrics. So four out of eight, hypothetically, if we had eight metrics that we were looking at in goal one, how many are we meeting? Four out of eight would be the example so far with the fake data. And you're going to be able to click on view dashboard here. And then across the top, you'll see goal one, goal two, goal three, and then goal four. And then again, like I said, you'll be able to hover your cursor over those. That data is going to pop out. You're also going to be able to click and then drill down deeper and be able to look at what baseline data is, current data, and then what is that target? So any questions on the dashboard? Okay. Is this a time where we want to go into discussion? Or, because I think that was the next topic on the agenda.
Yeah, that's perfect. That's essentially what we had planned, give everyone a minute to make sure you're able to get into the dashboard. Justin had sent out a link last week. And it also linked back to the overall data dashboard that talked about the metrics and the aligned actions. And then within that, Gary has also linked the specific, there were four specific ones that spoke to KPIs. And so you can further go from there to see exactly what those KPIs are for the four items. It was 1.1, 4.1.
2.1, 2.4, and 4.2.
Thank you. So I'll let you all get in to make sure that you're able to view what I'm viewing and the dashboard while you're doing that. I hope everyone had a chance over the weekend to dig in and play around with it a bit. I am very impressed. I am very excited for this. I think this is something that is going to be incredibly useful for our community. And it is an interactive way to be a part of it and really bring our community into the fold of it. And just going over, I know all of the data is not in there yet, but just in the sandbox per se, it's very exciting. So thank you for all of your work on that. Is everybody in and able to navigate? Anything that stands out in particular to anybody? The usability, the metrics? James?
I'm looking at his screen. I was looking across the bottom for the years. Like on my screen, it's a little bit smaller and it's all kind of condensed together and squished. I didn't know if it would, from formatting from that first stuff, if it would be better to just put the last two digits of the year, so 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, depending on how people are looking at it. So the bigger screen, it stretches out, but smaller screens, it kind of squeezes it together.
So what you're saying is down here?
Yeah.
Down here, maybe have fewer years.
Go back. Close that tab. So in that window there, on those little blue bar graphs on the bottom, so you get spaces between there, but like when I'm looking at it on my side, they're all together. And it looks like one long string. So from a, from an appearance and formatting.
Okay.
So you mean like a 21, 22, 23 instead of a 21?
Yeah.
Yep.
What one are you on? You're on two? Let me just see if it's that.
This is two.
Yeah.
Looks like it might be computer-based. Might show up differently.
Okay.
Because mine is showing up like yours.
Okay.
It's a five-year plan, so I think we're trying to do five years.
Well, if I zoom in my screen to make it larger print, it doesn't. But if it's at 100%, yeah. So it's just.
Right.
Okay.
Well, it's really weird because like 100%, the script is all gathered. But if I go down to 90.
It's going to the same as your, on my dashboard.
Up here.
I'll show you afterwards. And you, I just.
That sounds good.
It's feedback, right?
Yes, please.
You know.
Yes.
That way, if someone's looking at it in an iPad, I don't know what it would look like versus a mobile device.
Right, on a phone.
Yeah.
And I do want to echo that the key resources tab is very helpful to have right there. And you can refer back to the strategic plan and anything to help you understand the data. And with that being said, under each, will you also have on this screen that's up right now, you know, what the target is for each year? Or is that simply going to live in key resources?
The target probably won't be right here. But when you click on this, the target will be here.
Okay.
And so you're going to see current.
Yep.
Baseline, target.
And that will be specific to each year that we're in. For example, if we're looking at this next year.
Yes.
You'll already have it updated into the year two target. Wonderful. Any other comments, questions? I guess you and I won't sit up here and talk all night about it. But a great job. I like it a lot. I think it's going to be incredibly helpful. I can't say that enough. And our community, I think, is going to receive it very well. So thanks again.
Yes, you're welcome. And again, we're hoping that this goes live with our data mid-October for the October 21st Board of Ed meeting. So we're hoping it goes live by then. So that's tentative. Any other questions?
Okay. Thanks again.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We had decided to add governance right here. James, would you like to give us an update? You had a meeting today?
Yeah, we did. We met at 4 o'clock.
Thank you.
Excuse me, 4:30 we started till 6:00. Went through. Give me a second. Grab my notes. We went through the standard operating procedure manual, the board manual. There's some changes and stuff that we made there. Looking to update it. Hold on. I got it here. This is like thinking where exactly I put it. So we went through, there's some grammatical stuff that we changed, some wording through We've, why am I drawing a blank here? We also talked about, like the new one has the date of like August 25th. So we can watch to see when we're updating it, when it's last updated, to go through there. In the new one, and it's actually live on the website, and I'll show it to you guys here. But our strategic plan, along with our goals, have been added into there. There's a new map towards the end of it. It's our district map, but this came from, we're thinking transportation, but it's kind of hard to read. So we're looking at changing that around a bit. So it's a little bit easier to read and such.
Will you be bringing the red line version per se to the board for approval? As we did when we introduced the operating procedures?
So some of the things that are being updated, like the strategic plan and stuff is already live, right? Because we got, the other stuff was taken out for the old strategic plan. That's no longer there because the board already approved that. So we just updated that content to match what the current strategic plan is, along with the goals.
So that's the only thing that has been updated within the operating procedures?
That, and then we were adding policy numbers to where the items weren't in there, if it was referencing back to a policy number. For one instance, talking about unscheduled comments to the board or unscheduled public participation, our policy is a .01, and it had it as just the regular one. So we updated that and stuff. So again, minor changes for that. But overall, from a content perspective, if there's massive changes, yeah, we'd bring it to the board to make them aware of it.
Would you mind sending the updates to the board? I just want everyone to be aware of what's changing.
And then we talked about, as we went through, so inside of the operating procedure, let me get to the right page here. Talked about the monthly calendar or the monthly agenda proposed in here. So with this, this is important that we know as board members what exactly is planned out for each quarter. So for instance, if there's something that a board member would want, they would, looking for a presentation, hopefully they would reach out to the board president, to the superintendent at the same time and stuff. But the superintendent might go back and say, well, you know what? It's September. We're going to deliver that in November. And is there really a reason to warrant to bring it up, you know, sooner? Obviously, if there's something that happened within the district that warrants that, we're flexible with that. But also being mindful that this is the same calendar that the ad teams and the department heads are looking at. So they have enough time to prepare a detailed report and presentation for it. And it's not something that has sprung on them really quick where they don't have enough time to put it all together. Am I forgetting anything? Sorry, Beth. Ann?
That new member checklist we were talking about coming back.
Yeah. When you guys did that, for the new member, the appendix indices, where'd that come from?
That was a multitude of areas. We referenced MASB, the courses there. And that, there was a lot of, you know, to be honest, looking at other districts and best practice. And so if I remember correctly, Lake Orion was the closest that we used. We made it our own.
Okay.
But it included a packet that should be given to, you know, the links for MASB classes and videos to watch and Robert's Rules and all of those different things.
So when we looked at this, and don't, we saw it, but we were looking at ways to embed those links into this. That way, it's easily there and stuff. I mean, that, we know the document that you get because Sarah Beth talked about it when she did her stuff. But just trying to take what we did, build upon it, make it better. The other thing that came up out of an MASB seminar was the CBA 101. We currently have it listed as taking after you take your oath. But they recommended to having people, as they come on to the board, especially around the election cycle, to having that class done before their first meeting. Would give them a good foundational work or an understanding of what it means for a board member.
Interesting. Was that in our operating procedures that it recommended not until after oath?
Yes, after taking office, yeah.
Yeah, because many of us, I know, I know I took all my 100 before January, before, I know both of you guys had started taking classes before we were at our first meeting. So, okay, that must have been an oversight. Thank you.
I was trying to remember if we took it, did we take it before or just after? Because I thought there was, because I asked about taking certain things before. And it was, well, you're not, haven't officially taken your oath of office yet and stuff.
Oh, no, I definitely pushed hard on that. I took all my 100, I remember, because I had COVID in December. And I took all of my online classes during that time.
Yep. So in operating procedures, but again, as we go through this, I mean, this is a living document that we're only going to make better as we go on and we learn from it and get feedback from new board members, from existing board members, and then as new data and information comes out. But yeah, I will do an email recap to the board, especially since Mike Aldrich isn't here. And so that way, he's aware of what we did and stuff. And put inside there.
Okay.
Ladies?
Thanks so much. Any questions for Governance Committee? All right. Appreciate it.
Yep, thanks.
Item B, field trip approvals. You had all seen these at the last meeting. Would anybody like to make a motion? Sarah Beth, thank you.
I move to approve the field trips for OHS BPA States, OHS BPA Nationals, OHS Dance, Speech, and Choir.
Support. James, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Item C, again, you had this on first reading, last meeting. Would anybody like to make this motion? James, thank you.
Move to approve policies 3121, 3211, 3301A, 3307, 3402, 5202, 5307, 5406, 5411, 5420, 5603, 5701, 5707, and 5712 as presented.
Support. Ann, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item D, motion for school of choice. James, keep it rolling.
We'll keep rolling with it. So move to approve the school of choice reading for the 2025, 2026 school year, second semester as presented.
Support. Shane, thank you. Discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Sarah Beth, thank you. Motion carries. Okay, item E, we have three FOIA appeals. And just to make sure everybody's on the same page, and Justin, make sure I'm correct. Our first one regard, is in regards to communication with legislators. Yes? Senator Slotkin specifically. Our second one, we had a legal opinion that was given to the board and everyone should be familiar with regarding Daisy. And our third one was for the finance RFPs. And this was also responded to in an email. So just want to make sure everyone is clear on what we're discussing. If there's any questions beforehand, or if we'd like to move into any specific motions. Okay?
So for the first one, move to uphold the fees being applied regarding the Danielle Krosak FOIA. So for the first one, move to uphold the fees being applied regarding the Danielle Crozek FOIA.
Support. Ann? Okay, Ann, discussion. The way that motion was read is that the fee would be upheld. Shane?
Yeah, so I, again, I guess I'll just reiterate my same thoughts, that I, I want the information out there as best we can get it. I understand resources, cost, I get it. I just think that, again, we're kind of treading into territory where, whether intentional or unintentional, this is a barrier. And so, again, just expressing my uncomfortability with that.
Thank you. I tend to agree on this specific one. I think communication to any of our legislators, that could be public and should be public, and I don't see a reason to not disclose that, or at least, you know, provide the barrier of a fee with that. I think that's a good thing, personally. So, not that I always agree with, because, you know, we'll keep going here, but with this specific one, I would be more in favor of waiving this fee.
But this is just an appeal to the estimate, correct? This is not the final fee, if I read that correctly, right? So she's already appealing the estimate, and it could be less than what the estimate is.
Correct.
Was there a deposit given at all, or is this right out the gate denying or appealing? Okay. So it's not, again, it's not that we're not trying to be transparent, but looking through the time and effort and stuff, and continuing to get these FOIAs, especially from Danielle, who puts a significant number of FOIAs in for us on the district, we're taking valuable time away from our administration, our ad team, that in turn takes away from the overall programming for our students and for our community. And so, I hear what you're saying about it being potentially a barrier, but to what detriment? Are you willing to continue to waive fees, and it starts going into our programming for our students, or taking away from the jobs that they're supposed to be doing?
I guess I'm confused, because I'm not sure if your your comments are aimed at specifically, like, our results of the M-SEPs, or the concern within the community of our low test scores, is that what you're specifically speaking to?
No, I'm talking about, we continue to look at these, and frankly, for this particular person, Danielle, continues to appeal them. And yourself and others continue to give in and waive it for her. But then others have come up, and you guys are dead against waiving the fees. And so, from my point and my perspective, you guys are cherry picking certain things for certain people in the community, and yet, when I go back and we look at the work that needs to be handled to procure this stuff, and again, going back, this is an estimate, not the final bill, and she's already requesting an appeal and a waive of the fees. So the final could be less, and I might be more apt to listen to it when the final bill or final, you know, due amount comes out. But we haven't even gotten out of part, right out the gate.
I don't consider this to be cherry picking, because as you call them frequent flyers, there have been times that we have upheld fees and times that we've waived fees for the people that you are speaking to. I don't believe that this is a cherry picking issue at all. I do believe that this is what the board's responsibility is, is to look at it, as to whether it's in the best interest of our community, and that's the lens that I have always taken through these decisions.
I, I, I don't see it that way, just from past voting and stuff, especially with Danielle. And she seems to email, and you guys respond, and then all of a sudden, things are getting waived, or making a motion to waive.
Well, you keep saying, you guys, who are you speaking directly?
Well, she doesn't email me. She emails you, Mike, Mike Aldrich, and Amanda. And she explicitly excludes me, Ann. Sometimes Sarah Beth's on there, sometimes she's not. Okay? So, that's where I'm going with this, this, that. But in this particular case, on this motion, I think we uphold the fees, wait for the final stuff to get done, and then we revisit it. And that's why I made the motion to uphold the fees. Because again, it's just an estimate that she's appealing, and not the final due.
We don't anticipate the estimate to be wildly different than...
It could be higher, it could be lower, but we don't have the final.
Okay. Any other comments on this?
After reviewing the recommendation from Collins and Blahout, was everyone able to review that? From the law firm that we pay to assess this for us? Okay. I, I don't understand why we would, why we would go against what they're recommending, which is to uphold the fees. Her fee estimate didn't meet the statutory requirements for a fee appeal? That's what I'm reading. Please correct me if you read something different. Waiving the fee requires the district to incur the undue burden and expense of responding to the FOIA request without reimbursement. Once again, I'll make the same point I've made before, that I listen to the experts that we have at our disposal. So if anyone has differing expert opinion, I welcome that, but I haven't heard it.
We did have, within policy, we did have them present to us as to where our ability to waive fees comes from, and it's right within, she did advise us that as long as we are within the realm of whether we think it's in the best interest of the public to have the information, we have every right to waive or uphold the fee. That was a specific presentation, and I believe it was available to everybody after policy.
Oh, right, that is available to us, yes. That was explained as being an available option to the board. But as for the recommendation from the experts regarding this particular FOIA, I haven't heard any other expert opinion differing from this.
Okay, anyone else? So the motion right now is that the fee is upheld. Should we just do roll call to make it easier?
We don't need to.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Okay. That did not pass, though. Would anybody like to make another motion on that? I can. Move to waive the fee being appealed regarding the Danielle Crozek FOIA. Support. Shane, thank you. All those in favor?
Hold on, we have to have discussion.
Discussion, I'm sorry. I thought we had a lot in the last ones, my bad. Yes, please, further discussion.
I, I just, I mean, echoing what Ann said, and make it very clear. So, we reached out, we paid for the lawyers to get a legal opinion on this, they gave it to us to uphold, and that was the recommendation, and you guys are fine with paying that fee to the lawyers, and then waiving this one.
I guess I just don't subscribe to the theory of blindly following expert opinion. I think that we have the option to waive fees if we feel it's in the best interest of the community, and if we feel that is this situation, then it's our right to exercise that.
Could you speak more to the benefit to the community on this particular one?
Well, I think, given the fact that they're asking specifically, or I should say, her FOIA is around the canine detection dog, and she's...
This one is about the Slotkin.
Oh, I'm so sorry, excuse me.
Yeah, that's okay, get ahead of us, you're on the second one. This is specifically to Slotkin and communication with our legislators.
So I guess, where would the benefit be to not open that information up to the community? I guess I would reverse that back.
But we're not, we're not denying the opening and giving that information. We're giving an estimate of what it would take for the search parameters to go through and to correlate and bring all that data together, to then turn it over. And that is what is being appealed, is that cost for the work that our staff, administration team is doing, to gather all those emails, to put them together, to make sure that they go through, that there's no FERPA, no HIPAA, you know, the stuff that is not discoverable through FOIA.
And I think you were directing it at Shane, but I'd like to also weigh in on why I think that it's important. I think that what this FOIA is ultimately going to show is a good thing. I believe that the district communicating with Slotkin, bringing her into our staff appreciation, I think that what will be found within this FOIA is actually positive, and that's what our community has been asking for, and so I'd like to see it out there without any financial barriers. That's my opinion.
I also want to raise the very repeated and obvious theme that we're about to ask our community for additional tax levies for these millages. And so then to not be fiscally responsible with the process that we do have from the legislator for these FOIA appeals, which is not disputing whether the information should be public, it is public, but the process at which to process it, which is our employees' time, doesn't seem to be a prudent use of those funds, of which we are about to ask our community for more. So that's, there's a lot of reasons wrapped up into this of the mechanisms for which the district is charged with protecting these funds, this being one of them.
I don't disagree. I think everybody at this table has valid reasons and points. I do not say that I wholeheartedly disagree with you, and my my opinions on the next two, I think will show that as well. But I do think that it is a case-by-case basis, which we have been talking quite a bit about, and I do not take it lightly, that it is our employees' time, and I think that everybody has raised very valid points when it comes to this, and I'm glad that we can have the discussion surrounding it.
In light of the fact that it's a particular person, would you guys have a different opinion if it was a different person from our community asking for this information?
No, I've been, I would still uphold the fees. There has been some that I've agreed with, that were, that I voted to, with the consensus of the group, the rest of the group, of waiving. But that might have been only one or two, but for the most part, for everybody, you know, there's nothing that we've had in any of our other stuff that has been exorbitant or excessive and stuff.
Okay.
Is that question for everyone? Does everyone have to answer it?
I already answered. I said, no, it does not matter who, what name is on it.
Okay.
And I think it shouldn't.
It shouldn't.
I mean, it shouldn't matter at all.
No, I'm saying, but you've been saying yeah.
It shouldn't matter if it's their first FOIA or their...
I want to make sure this isn't just because it's her.
It's not because it's her, but she is a, she is one individual, and in this case, it's her appeal to the fees, but she has raised this appeal on different FOIAs.
Okay.
A few times.
The, we have a compromise here with the reduce.
But that's not the motion at the table right now.
Yeah, right now, the motion on the table is to waive.
So, to that point, if this doesn't pass, then if you wanted to make a motion to reduce, yes.
All right.
Yeah, yeah. Does that help you out?
I'm jumping ahead.
No, no, that's fine.
Sorry.
Okay, any further discussion on waiving the fee? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Did you vote? I didn't hear anything.
I would agree to waive.
Agree, okay. Thank you. Okay, that motion carries. Moving on to our second, this specific one, again, you can reference the legal opinion. This is regarding the Daisy FOIA. Would anybody like to start with a motion before we go into discussion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Move to uphold the denial being appealed regarding the Corey Vander K FOIA.
Support. Ann, thank you. And discussion. This one, I would be in agreement that we need to uphold the denial. This was pertaining to the specific words that were used in the FOIA, which resulted in what came back, and the person who is appealing did not, in my opinion, satisfy, and of course, our legal opinion, the additional information that she's seeking, simply because it's not part of the scope that she submitted. If she is going to go ahead and submit a different FOIA request and encapsulate the information she was looking for, that's a whole nother story. But right here, in my opinion, I do believe that we should uphold the denial. Anybody else like to say anything?
I agree with you, lending, again, to the people, the law firm that we reached out to, and full-heartedly reading through their legal opinion on it, I agree with what they put in there.
Anybody else? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Our third one, to give a little back history, I know you've all been on these emails, so you've seen, and we also, you know, have the opinion. This is to do with the RFPs related to finance and procuring another insurance company, and within that, what is being denied is that there are no records, and, or appealed, excuse me, not denied. And there really aren't any records, because the process hasn't gotten to that step yet. And so, you have all seen this, and I haven't spoken to Ms. Prince since I sent her the email, but she is also updated on where we are in the process, and so I hope that that helped further clarify why there are no records within this FOIA. So there's some backstory. Would anybody like to make a motion? I will. Move to uphold the denial being appealed regarding the Marissa Prince FOIA. Support. Mike Whitney, thank you. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Item seven, a little more lighthearted internal controls presentation. Ms. Courtney, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight. In our Board Finance Committee meetings, we've discussed a lot of our business office processes, and during our most recent one in August, we discussed that it would be nice if I came and explained some of those to you, so that everybody was on the same page, and you had the information to show how we are, we are running in the business office. So this presentation will provide transparency into our procedures and show how our strategic plan guides our processes in the business office. Okay, I want to introduce our business office team. They're your trusted financial partners in the district operations. Each member plays an essential role to ensure fiscal responsibility, compliance, and operational efficiency. They're committed to managing our finances with integrity and accountability. So we have our Assistant Superintendent of Business and Operations, John Fitzgerald. Myself is the Finance Director. Our Payroll Coordinator is Meg Nicholson. Accounts Payable Specialist is Brenda Brown. And our Procurement and Grant Specialist is Michelle Anderson. Internal controls are systematic policies, procedures, and mechanisms designed to ensure an organization operates effectively, efficiently, and in compliance with applicable laws and regulations. They're important in every industry, but they're especially important here because we are stewards of taxpayer dollars. So we have to ensure that we are following all of the controls in place and making sure that we're doing that responsibly. So as stewards of taxpayer dollars, we have a legal and fiduciary responsibility to demonstrate accountability to our community while complying with complex federal, state, and local regulations. Having controls in place can help, um, help ensure financial protection and accuracy. That allows us to catch those errors that may happen before they impact our financial statements. It protects our assets from theft or misuse, and it ensures that we have reliable data for sound decision-making. Strong internal controls drive operational efficiency throughout our district. Standardized processes and procedures create clear expectations and create smooth workflows. Our internal controls also help build transparency and trust. They demonstrate responsible management of our district resources and provide reliable information to our stakeholders. Internal controls can look different in many organizations. These are some of the internal controls that we have in place here at Oxford Community Schools. Segregation of duties ensures that no single person can authorize, process, and complete a financial transaction independently. We have multiple light layers of review and approval. Every financial transaction in our district also requires dual approval. From vendor payments, baking transactions, and payroll, they all are independently reviewed by, by a minimum of two people before they are processed. And many transactions require additional layers. Our budget serves as the financial roadmap for our district's strategic plan. Through budget amendments, we can adjust the roadmap as needs change and additional resources become available. Each year, we have an independent audit conducted and, independent auditors conduct a comprehensive annual review of our district's financial operations. This audit spans over several months. It begins in May with our preliminary fieldwork as our fiscal year is coming to an end. And then it resumes again in September after we've done all of our fiscal year-end processes and we've reviewed all of the revenues and expenditures for the full year. We actually just completed our audit a couple of weeks ago. Our auditors receive unrestricted access to all our financial records, and they use a sampling method to test accuracy across our operations. Our business office works with many departments to ensure complete cooperation so they can complete the comprehensive testing in the areas of grant programs, payroll, disbursements, cash management, revenue recognition, and asset management. For the past several years, Yo and Yo has been our audit firm. Jacob will be here next month, I believe it's October 21st, to present the findings of our fiscal '25 audit. We have several payment methods available to make payments to our vendors for our goods and services. The AP process is used generally for those large purchases, payment to our contractors for services rendered, reoccurring payments. The types of payments that we offer to those vendors through the AP process, we can issue them in an ACH where we send the money directly to their bank account. They can choose to receive a live check and we send it to them in the mail. Or we also have some vendors that choose to do direct debit or a wire transfer. The purchasing cards are typically used for smaller dollar amounts. They're used for travel expenses, online transactions. We do have some that are reoccurring payments. And then same for emergency purchases. There are several things that need to happen before a purchasing transaction is complete. The first step is the approval is given to make the purchase. So depending on what type of purchase, that could look different between the requestor and the approver. It could be a teacher asking permission from their principal to order teaching supplies or a coach from the athletic director for equipment for their team. Depending on the payment method, those invoices are either entered into our accounting system, which is Skyward, by the department. Or if they're using a purchasing card, those transactions are loaded by the business office. Invoices are then routed to the appropriate approver. We use a multi-level approvals process, meaning that every transaction has at least two people that approve it before it's completed. For high-dollar transactions, it also requires the approval of myself before it moves on to that next process. After all of the approval, approvals have been taken, we run our accounts payable process, and that is when it's actually posted to our general ledger account or the payment is issued through the AP process. I want to make sure to point out that this process is the same regardless of what payment method we use. Purchasing card transaction goes through the same approval process as an invoice that's paid through the accounts payable process. So it still will go through every, every level as if it was one or the other. This image shows the typical path taken by a transaction from start to finish when a purchase needs to be made. As you can see, the transaction touches a lot of people before it gets to that end approval. There's several items that we're checking before we approve the transaction. First, we're making sure that the person that's requesting the purchase is authorized to do so. We make sure that the required documentation is attached to the transaction in Skyward. So for every transaction that we have, we require either an invoice or a detailed receipt showing what goods and services were purchased. We ensure that the expenses are allowable based on the fund that's used to being paid for it. So a good example is our sinking fund. We check to make sure that whatever we're posting those, to those sinking fund accounts are allowable in that fund because that may be different than something that's paid out of the general fund or our student activity accounts. We also check and make sure that the account that we're using is posted appropriately. We follow the MDE Accounting Manual to determine what account structure to use. And then we also make sure that there's budget available to make the purchase. I'm going to give a big shout out to our Accounts Payable Specialist, Brenda Brown. She touches every transaction that comes through the district. She makes sure that she can check off all those boxes. And she does an incredible job making sure that all of the information is there, it's appropriate. And she asks any questions if she's unsure before she lets it go to that final process. The business office requires a purchase order for any transaction that's over $5,000. This adds an extra layer of approval for those high-dollar purchases. Board approval could also be required based on the specifics of the purchase. Our board policies are compliant with all state and federal laws. And then also, if it's a grant purchase, it may require some additional oversight as well. When determining if we're going to apply for a grant, we first determine if that grant aligns with our strategic plan. There are many grants available out there, and some of them either we don't qualify for or it may not be in our strategic plan and we decide to not continue the process. If we decide to apply, the application is completed in the appropriate platform. Part of the application process is to generate a detailed budget that's then reviewed and approved by the managing agency. Once the grant is awarded and the program budget is approved, we embed that budget in, into our accounting system. And then those awards would be reflected in our budget amendment process throughout the year based on when they're approved. Periodic reviews are done by the business office to ensure that only allowable expenses are posted to those grant accounts. And then reporting and funding requests are completed based on the specific grant requirements. Every grant has different compliance requirements. So depending on if it's a federal, state, or local grant, some of these steps may look differently. The purchase, the purpose of the purchasing card program is to create cost efficiency in the purchasing process. It's intended to expedite transaction processing and eliminate the use of invoices in those low-dollar amount transactions. All of our purchasing cards are issued through BMO Bank. We chose this bank because it, the MSBO Michigan Purchasing Card Consortium, that's the bank that they use. So there's a, a big platform available to us to help guide us through that process. All of our cardholders are approved by the business office. We do issue cards in both individual names and the departments, depending on the needs. A purchasing card agreement is signed by the cardholder acknowledging the roles and responsibilities of having a district credit card. Spending limits on all of those cards can fluctuate based on needs and to reduce exposure. For example, at the beginning of the school year, we have higher spending. As teachers are coming back, buildings are buying things that we need, we might up those limits. But as spending calms down, I'll go in and lower those limits so that we don't have high-dollar limits available on our credit cards, our purchasing cards throughout the year when it's not needed. And those are only changed in the business office. So those cardholders don't have the authority to go in and make any changes to the card limits on their own. And then we also have the state-required transparency reporting available on our website for all of our purchasing cards. Here's some notable data points for fiscal '25. As I mentioned earlier, Brenda touches all of these transactions. So she's a very busy lady. Last year, we processed 7,246 Accounts Payable invoices, 6,833 credit card transactions, and we managed and reported on 40 grants. Among those grants include both, or all three, federal, state, and local for current year funding and prior year carryover. Our business office procedures directly support goal point, 4.4 of our strategic plan by creating the foundation for innovative and sustainable operations. By centralizing resource management and standardizing our practices, we've created an efficient system that maximizes the educational impact of every dollar. Our financial procedures show integrity through transparent stewardship and innovation by using modern tools like Skyward for financial management and Amazon Business for streamlined purchasing. And I also want to recognize our business office team, our administrative team, and their support staff who work very hard to make sure our staff and students get what they need, all while following all of these internal controls to ensure that our district remains fiscally sound. And I appreciate you having me here tonight. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes. I was given a list of like 32 shared time schools, but I don't see them in the check register that we've, how do we support them? Does that come from a different fund? Because I'm also not seeing oval lists quite a few community vendors, and I'm only seeing a handful in the checkbook. So are they getting paid differently than through the checkbook or?
So they're paid, they're paid at different times throughout the year. Correct me if I'm wrong, they get paid in October and then February.
February, yeah.
Right, so they, you should be seeing those in the check register for those two months. So we don't pay them all year long for their resources. They get paid in one lump sum. Am I saying that correctly, Janet?
Right.
Just to add to that, the shared time schools don't get paid by us?
Don't get paid by us.
Okay.
No payment process to them?
Okay, okay. The community vendors, sorry, I did misspeak on that. The community vendors are the ones that we issue the payments, not the shared time schools. Thank you for saying that.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
I was just going to say thank you for going over this. I know we had talked about it in, in Finance Committee as well. So I appreciate the detail here in showing, um, some, I mean, some of the, the card as far as the safeguards that are put in place, the audits process, how kind of the items that we had talked about in the Finance Committee. I appreciate having this in front, because I think it is important. I mean, a lot of money is spent over the year, but a lot of money is, it's necessary to spend money to, to, to do all of the activities and the resource that we have. And I think the, it's important to ensure that our, our community understands there are checks and balances, of course. We're not giving somebody just a credit card to go spend whatever they want.
Right, right. And I, and I appreciate that sometimes being on the inside, it's like, it's second nature to us. It was nice to be able to share that and, you know, show that we have those checks and balances in place.
Thank you, I agree. I think that was very beneficial, very informative, not only for us, but, but the community. So thank you Finance Committee for lifting that up. And thank you so much and your team for putting this together and, and showing us. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Courtney.
Thank you.
All right. Item number eight, do we have on schedule? One, thank you. Emily Bush.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. In Michigan, school funding works a little differently than in many other states. Since Proposal A in 1994, districts received most of their money from the state through a per pupil foundation allowance. But there's a condition. Each district has to levy up to 18 mils on non-homestead property, businesses, rentals, and second homes to receive the full allotment. Homeowners, homeowners, primary residences are exempt. If a district doesn't levy the full amount, the state doesn't make up the difference. That creates an immediate shortfall in the operating budget, which covers salaries, buses, classroom programs, and student services. Alongside that operating millage, many districts, including ours, also maintain a sinking fund. That's a restricted fund used for facilities, safety improvements, transportation, and technology. It can't pay salaries, but it protects operating dollars from being drained by unexpected building costs. Now, I want to be clear. I believe Michigan's school funding system needs reform. Proposal A is 30 years old, and our state has changed dramatically since then. But until Lansing takes that on, we have to work within the framework we have now. Here's where Michigan stands. We spend about $16,200 to $17,500 per student, right around the middle of the pack nationally. 17 states spend more, 32 spend less. But here's the key. When you adjust for inflation, Michigan's per-student funding is still below what it was in the early 2000s. In other words, we've increased the dollar amounts, but the actual purchasing power has not kept pace with rising costs. In Oxford, a large portion of what we do spend is already spoken for. About 2,100 per student for administration, 2,400 for operations and food service, and nearly $900 just for debt interest. With so much tied up in fixed costs, cuts land squarely on staffing, programs, and supports. That matters because our district serves about 6,000 students, and staffing is where the safety net lives, teachers, paras, bus drivers, custodians, and counselors. After the 2021 tragedy, Oxford expanded mental health supports through temporary recovery funds. Those investments meant more counselors and smaller caseloads. But sustaining that safety net going forward depends on stable operating revenue. Without it, the various supports that help us recognize when a student is in crisis could be at risk. And let's remember, even though the last class of Oxford students who were in the building that graduated this spring, including my own son, our community is still navigating that trauma. Children in middle school and elementary schools across the district were locked down on November 30th, 2021. They're still here, still carrying that fear, still walking into classrooms every single day. So when we talk about millages, operating or sinking, it's not just about dollars and cents. It's about whether we can keep enough adults in our schools to teach, to mentor, and to notice when a child is struggling. It's about whether this community can provide steady support in the face of state-level budget uncertainty. And it's about whether we're willing to give Oxford kids what they need to heal, to learn, and to thrive. For those reasons, I'll be voting yes in November for the millage, and I encourage anyone listening to join me. Also, if any- yes in November for the millage, and I encourage anyone listening to join me. Also, if anyone would be interested in attending an informational session on how Michigan public school funding works currently, please reach out to me, and I'd be happy to coordinate for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. All right. Scheduled activities, we have our next meeting, Count Day on October 1st, and coming down to our first recess in October. Any administrative clarification, Dr. Milligan? Any final board comments? Seeing none. It is 8:02. This meeting is adjourned.